All right, welcome everyone. To kick this off, please give a warm round of applause for Dia Colcarney, who will be singing our national anthem. Please rise. Flag is over there. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fights or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Or the land of the free and the home of the brave? All right, thank you, Dia. Good evening. My name is Annika Turka and I, as well as Student Council Vice President Catherine McCall, right over here, am honored to welcome you to Montpelier High School's Class of 2024 Graduation Ceremony. Thank you all for joining us today. What do I say on such a special occasion? This was the question on my mind when I set out to write this speech. I was in the library with a blank piece of paper spread out on the table in front of me. I looked around at the library, at my classmates, and I just saw people, individuals. Because to me, the MHS class of 2024 is not some grand single entity. It's simply my friends that I've spent Monday through Friday and most weekends with for the majority of my life. As I waited for inspiration to strike, I doodled a cartoon of myself looking rather perplexed in the center of the page. As many of my friends and teachers know, drawing cartoon faces in any available margin is a habit of mine. In fact, if you look in your program today, you can see that I drew one for all of you. What I love about drawing cartoons is their simplicity and clean lines. A cartoon is not a photograph which captures every pore and shadow in pixelated detail. Cartoons reduce a realistic person or scene into a few easily recognizable lines. They're amusing, perhaps even more apt to cut to some deeper meaning because our imaginations fill in the personality of a character. In a sense, I see today's ceremonies as a cartoon of our graduating class. It would be impossible to recognize every conversation, lesson, or friendship that has shaped us into the people we are today. So, we'll celebrate our class's most prominent features and various methods of expression, our highlights and our wins. Like a cartoon, today we acknowledge eighty-eight special individuals as one cleanly outlined class. But that doesn't mean that we lose sight of the little things that have made these years so special. Instead, I encourage you to make your own meaning over the next few hours, to embrace the emotions that are difficult to articulate but recognized so effortlessly in art and in the faces of this crowd. Among all this action, let's remember that this day, just like our high school years, is fleeting. Who we are at this important milestone is just as impermanent. The Greeks carved reliefs into marble so that their art would last forever. The Inca cast their culture into gold figurines that still shine today. But cartoons? Cartoons are printed fresh each morning in hasty printer ink. Comic strips change daily. And today, after we leave this place that has allowed us to remain so similar with many of the same friends, interests, and goals that we have held for so long, I know that our cartoons of ourselves will be equally dynamic, reprinted each day with each new person and idea we encounter. I think that's worth celebrating, and like a cartoon, I ask that we look for a little humor in this growth. So, what do we do with today's cartoon in my graduating class? I hope the grandparents will display it proudly on the fridge, pinned under a colorful magnet, to celebrate how special their senior and their peers are. I hope the parents in the audience will take this scrap commemorating thirteen years of sports practices and dining room table homework sessions and tuck it in the family photo album. And to my classmates, I ask that you fold this cartoon close to your heart and carry it with you in the fall. Maybe wedge it in the corner of your dorm room mirror. I know I am excited for these final hours, a sketch of us and our years here together. Thank you. And I now invite Superintendent Libby Bonesdeale to the podium.
Thank you, Annika. After spending the year with your grandmother, I can imagine that cartoon is framed right next to her bedside and in the kitchen and in the dining room and in the living room. She's so proud of you. So, welcome to commencement 2024. On behalf of the Montpelier Roxbury School Board and all of our marvelous faculty and staff, it's my honor to welcome you as we celebrate this class. Take a moment and think about this particular group of Solans. It is this group that in their eighth grade year, the year they were meant to rule the halls of Main Street Middle School, the world literally shut down on them. During their ninth grade year, we designed a school to keep them away from each other. And just when they were ready to leave Montpelier High School as seniors, Mother Nature got in the way with a massive flood. I mean, come on. Right before your senior year, your high school's basement becomes the most massive swimming pool in the country and your town's virtually torn apart. So not cool, Mother Nature. But these Solans stuck together through it all. I've had the privilege of getting to know one particular Solan in this graduating class. He somehow manages to tuck the idea of connection into nearly every conversation we have. But it's not just good conversation with him. He's ensured that we all have connected over a good meal made from his hands and helped connect people from different heritage through his easy smile and welcoming personality. He always reminds me that one way, perhaps the most important way, to make it through the hard times is by connecting with the humans next to us. But he's not the only graduating Solan who knows this. Through every curveball life has thrown, these Solans have stayed true to their people and stepped up when needed. This class has connected through class and on the field. They've shined together on the stage and in outside pursuits. They put on waiters with their friends and neighbors and helped haul mud out from basements, a lot of mud. At a time when sometimes people aren't always so nice to each other, when our different opinions and perspectives get in the way, this class knows that connecting with those around you matters now more than ever before. They know that you have to show up for each other. It's what these Solans are all about. So, Solans, it is my sincere hope that you have had your fill of floods and pandemics in your young lives. It is also my hope that you take the connections you've made here with you and that you make so many more as you continue to learn and grow. Congratulations, MHS Class of 2024.
Thank you, Superintendent Bonesdeale. Please give a warm welcome to our first student speaker, Noah Rivera.
All right, there we go. Hi, so first off, I'd like to give a special thank you to a couple people here, Catherine and Ms. Norford. You guys have done so much for the senior class, you know, helping us out with Project Grad, which was awesome by the way, and our senior breakfast. This last week has been really memorable and none of it would have happened without you guys. So, thank you. I know I speak for the entire senior class when I say we appreciate you. Can we give them a round of applause? All right, so I should probably introduce myself since almost nobody here knows me. My name's Noah and I came to the school two years ago. I went camping with a small group of Montpelier kids and somehow, after just one night, they had talked me into transferring schools. I ended up here and although it's probably the most spontaneous thing I've ever done in my life, it also happened to be one of the best decisions I've ever made because, I don't know, I got into the best class I possibly could have, made some great memories and some even better friends. All right. When I first got here though, I knew almost nobody. I was super nervous that maybe I wouldn't fit in, what am I gonna do? But these guys swooped right in and welcomed me, gave me that signature Montpelier welcome and made me feel at home. So, I'm eternally grateful to this class right here and I'm just glad I get to repay the favor by saying a couple words here today. So, when I think about this class and what I've learned over the last two years, there's a couple of things that stand out. The first is that these guys are smart. And I'm gonna just give a couple shout outs here and they don't know what's coming. But first off, I'd like to shout out Sage Ben and Andre. You guys are all extra sciency and I'm sure I could have said that better, but it gets the point across. Kaylee, my fellow Harwood grad or would-be grad, you are incredible at poetry. You blew my mind this year in English. Let's see, Emmett, you're just eerily good at everything. And of course, Annika, you guys heard that speech you just gave. She's probably gonna be president in just a few years. On top of being smart, these guys are all just incredibly talented. I mean, just, I think the achievements speak for themselves. We have Ireland who scored a thousand points in basketball. That's no small feat. We have all the sports victories. I mean, there's almost too many to count these past few years. Soccer, basketball, you name it, we've probably won it. And hopefully, if all goes well, we'll have another one tomorrow with that Girls' Cross team. Everyone should go to the game if you can. And finally, while we're up here talking about success, I can't not mention The Radiance, our local band who we just found out recently. Yeah. We just found out recently they're gonna be playing at the Do Good Fest, which just happens to be the biggest concert in Vermont. So I think they deserve another bigger round of applause for that one. Yeah. And I could keep going all day here, but you guys get the point. These guys are just talented in every way, shape, and size. All right, you know, it's, I'm gonna miss everyone here, but I know we're gonna go off and do big things, make big splashes. The WikiHow article that I read on how to write these speeches, it told me I should always include a quote. So I think that's the best way to end this thing off. And Catherine, I'm sorry, this is your senior quote. I am gonna steal it because I love Ferris Bueller. He said, "Life moves pretty fast. If you don't stop and look around once in a while, you could miss it." And I know it's incredibly cliche, but I think we should listen to Ferris and just take a second here, you know, look around, appreciate everyone who showed up today, live in the moment because this is more than likely the last time we'll all be in one room together. Thank you, guys, and again, congratulations, everyone.
All right, thank you, Noah. We now present the Honor Choir singing "The Times They Are A-Changin'" by Bob Dylan, arranged by Adam Pod with solos by the Honor Choir seniors.
Come gather 'round, people, wherever you go. And admit that waters round you are full. And accept it that soon you'll be drenched to the bone. If your time to you is worth saving, Then you'd better start soon, when you stand like a stone. For the times they are a-changing. Come, mothers and fathers throughout the land, And don't criticize what you can't understand. Your sons and your daughters are beyond your command. Your old road is rapidly fading. Please get out of the new one if you can't lend a hand. For the times they are a-changing. The line it is drawn, the curse it is cast. The slow one now will later be fast. For the present now will later be past. The order is rapidly fading. The first one now will later be last. The first one now will later be last. The first one now will later be last. The times they are a-changing. Times they are a-changing.
Thank you, Honor Choir. Please welcome our second student speaker, Alara Cone, to the stage.
Good evening, everyone. I am so incredibly honored to have been chosen by my wonderful peers to stand before you today. Now, let's get this thing started. May 25th, 2006, I emerged victorious from my mother's-
Whoa, 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 Alara. Alara, what are you doing?
What?
How long is your speech?
Well, it's, if I speak really fast, just under four hours.
Four hours?
Well, it is my graduation speech.
I don't think people need to hear every breakfast you've ever had for the past eighteen years.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna tell them everything, like this one.
Girl, he said that to you?
Yep, the same day my grandma died.
Totes harsh.
For real.
Well, you've got two-
I've got two, focus on myself. I know, I know.
Oh, no, I was saying you have two minutes left. Good luck.
Oh, um, okay. Let me start over. As I recall the previous graduations I've been to, I remember one common theme among them, the graduation metaphor. And I'm sure you've all heard one before. You know, when the speaker compares life after high school to the beginning of a new chapter in the unfinished book that is your life? Or a blank canvas, each of us artists equipped with a paintbrush of destiny, ready to paint our future? Well, I like to think of life as one big game of long-form improv. Because like, you, and then, like, you don't know what, um, okay. Book, the book's kind of clever, I guess. Actually, no. No more metaphors. You know, I could stand up here and say, "Life is a graduation speech", and you'd all nod your heads and go, "Wow, now that girl, she's gonna do some great things in life." But does that metaphor even make any sense? Not really. I mean, we use metaphors to try to convey the complexities of life in a way that's easy for us to understand. But I think it's because we're scared of what we don't know. By attempting to bridge the gap between the known and the unknown, we oversimplify the vastness of the human experience by comparing it to a book or a painting. Because books and paintings are familiar. They're human. It almost feels supernatural to try to envision the entirety of your life and the choices that could shape who you become. It gives me this weird feeling in my stomach, like the same one I get when I eat too many pizza sticks from the cafeteria. But then that weird feeling turns into frustration as I stand in front of my mirror, begging my reflection to show me something different. Would I be the same person? Would things have been different? I desperately need to know the thousands of lives I could have had if I made a different choice or took another path. I want to raise my fist and strike the mirror, hoping that when it shatters, each shard reflects a version of myself that I could have become. But instead, I see the same girl who's been staring back at me for the past eighteen years. The same girl who's been changing every day yet still remains whole. Because we only have one life we get to live. And unlike a book, we don't have any rough drafts that an editor can look at and say, "Okay, so delete the decision to cut your bangs at twelve in the morning" or, "Oh, could you just rephrase that conversation you had with your crush? It was just a little..." You know, we aren't born with an outline for the rest of our lives detailing the steps we need to take in order to reach a satisfying conclusion. Unlike a painting, we don't get to start over when we mess up or paint over our embarrassing memories. I mean, if we did that, no one would be able to remember middle school. And who doesn't wanna remember middle school? Real life is something we will never be able to truly define with a metaphor. And do we really have to? If we turned our backs to everything that made us feel uncertain, we wouldn't have gotten out of bed this morning. I wouldn't be giving this speech right now. Though the future may be daunting, each and every one of us has the ability to step into the unknown and embrace the opportunity given to us to experience being alive. Whether that's through the relationships we form with one another or pursuing our passions, when your feet grow tired and you feel yourself wanting to rest, it'll be time to look back on everything you've accomplished, imperfections and all. I hope that when you do reflect on these four years of learning, you'll be able to smile, a big toothy smile. Because what's more human than that? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alara. I think she deserves another round of applause for that one. And now we turn our attention to student performers Callum Robacheck, Emmett Jarvis, Chase Erlich, Alara Cone, Mira Pompey, Dia Colcarney, and Finley Torrance Martin to perform "Masterpiece" by Big Thief. We're figuring some things out right here. Now I have the honor of welcoming our faculty speaker, JK, to the stage.
Hello, almost graduates, caregivers, administration, faculty, friends, and family. My name is Jamie Connor, better known as JK, and I could not be more delighted to be with you all here today, celebrating the accomplishments of these young people. Before I highlight some of their success stories, let me share a bit about myself. To be at MHS is a homecoming for me. Sixteen years ago, the great DMA was my mentor teacher, and I pocketed the subtle humor he embeds in his instruction. And my favorite way, he says, "I digress", after getting wildly off-topic. For two years after that, I had the privilege to witness Karen McCadden encourage reluctant learners to write and leave their brave hearts and wise brains on the page. I gained the ability to offer critical, yet kind feedback from the beloved Sarah Squire. Before global connectivity was a thing, Sue Monminy and I collaborated on a project connecting our MHS students to incarcerated youth in Mississippi to discuss the big, challenging, and very real ideas in Harper Lee's "To Kill a Mockingbird". Thirteen years ago, I prayed that John Bait would retire, so that I could keep working with these brilliant professionals who inspired my teaching career. But now, I am even more grateful that I get to sit by John's side in our department meetings and marvel at the space he creates for his ninth-grade students to share their discerning ideas. Stepping away from this place that I loved actually granted me the ideal opportunity to establish my own teaching voice, which is loud, and to define what I love about teaching: stories, language, and the strangest but most important variable: seniors in high school. Hey, seniors, I hope you can see the parallels between that moment and the one we are in right now. When the opportunity to return to MHS and teach seniors came up, I did not hesitate to throw my hat in the ring. I have been embarrassing myself in front of the group that sits before you ever since. Early in the year, they failed to save me from drowning in a sea of LE scores, of threes and fours. Literally, not one of them threw me a life preserver. Instead, I received firmly worded emails questioning the score they earned using the rubric "The Class Created"? I digress. But in time, they entertained reading and analyzing poetry, wrote hundreds of thesis statements, and even embraced a Shakespearean tragedy and my horrifying portrayal of the heartbroken Ophelia. Thus, in preparing for this speech, I wanted to go big. I listened to and sang along with the late, great Earth Angel Whitney Houston and Kygo's version of "Higher Love", and I imagined citing some lyrics that would prompt both a live choral and exploding horn performance. And I asked Ms. Norford, "Does this seem like too much?". And she promised me that too much was exactly why you seniors asked me to speak in the first place. So thank you for that vote of confidence. However, without the time or expertise to fully orchestrate this glee-inspired plan, I'll resort to gratitude instead. Mr. Gingold asked me, two or three weeks into the job, what felt different about teaching here? And my answer has evolved a bit. I immediately observed the distinct lack of middle school students in the building, and that makes a huge difference. Uh, but what I see now is a genuine embodiment of the guiding tenants that ground what we do here: take care of ourselves, take care of others, take care of this place. I've seen these words in action over and over again. And my goal tonight is to express my deepest appreciation for my favorite second first year at Montpelier. According to Harvard Health's positive psychology research, gratitude is strongly and consistently associated with greater happiness. And while my aim isn't necessarily to promote this trending lifestyle goal, quite the contrary, if you ask your student about their emotional responses to some of the difficult texts we've tackled this year, I just know I feel good when I see and acknowledge a Great Now polish color, a state championship win, an outstanding performance, or the super smart and thoughtful reflections your students wrote in response to the genius of Ta-Nehisi Coates, Zadie Smith, and Toni Morrison. And I'll paint a little picture of this group's magic and excellence at school for those folks who aren't lucky enough to spend every day in their hilarious company. My first thank you, though, goes to caregivers, parents, and guardians. I learned so much from your stories in our brief time together at conferences in the fall and spring. I am so grateful for each fifteen-minute time slot and want to acknowledge how deserving you all are in hearing about the wonderful people you've raised. While some connections remain tightly gathered around the kitchen table, others have grown more distant. As your child juggles one, two, or more sports practices, one, two, or more band practices, theater practices, jobs, friends, and family, there you are, you're on the list. But I've learned the ways this relationship may change with my own daughters, Tilly May, who's a kindergarten student, not to be confused with Jerry Tillitson, and my boss baby, Georgia Kathleen. I've been observing the sister acts, too, around the school and learning. Thank you for trusting me with your greatest gift. Those humans are so awesome. My next thank you goes out to Spring Fling DJ, Lindy Olderman, my student-teacher extraordinaire. She was my personal cheerleader-style guru, without whom I honestly can't even begin to reflect on the year without her in it. This year, with encouragement from our fearless leaders, I took care of myself by saying no to anything extra. I did not send or receive emails after five. I did not join any committees. I simply focused my attention on my classroom and stand-up, I mean instructional materials, with one exception: saying yes to mentoring a master student at UVM. I just wish Lindy were here. Wait, who's that? Lindy, stand and be recognized! I had no idea how positive, inspiring, collaborative, and just plain fun working with a student-teacher could be. Thank you for the lyrical "good mornings", coffee walks, collages, Canva templates, and converting paper copies to digital PDF expertise. My hunch is that the way we took care of each other set an expectation for how students would treat each other in our classroom and would treat you during your solo teaching period. And from my humble point of view, it was a wild success. And now on to my gratitude for the members of the graduating class of 2024. The very first interaction I had with one of your parents was receiving a thank you email disclosing that their child was so excited about AP English class. Due to the rigor of the canonical literature we would be pursuing independently over the first semester, you ask? No. No, it was primarily due to the jelly bands and friendship string I had provided as productive fidgets. While many of you took advantage of this opportunity to focus in a distracted way, others turned towards your calculus homework, doodling, uh, or your dreaded screens. But I assure you, caregivers, it was only ever to play all of the nerdy New York Times games. Um, I promise. Uh, regardless, seniors, please reach below you to discover a small gift. It's on the underside of your chairs. You'll get yours, sorry. Whether we spent the entire year in the classroom together, six hours playing or coaching soccer together, a fleeting moment in the hallway or cafeteria together, or even if this is the first time you've ever seen me, please accept this friendship bracelet as a small token of my gratitude for you all and all of the laughter, tears, inspired written claims, and inspired spoken excuses, attendance question responses, compliments, honest critiques, and did I mention laughter that we've shared together this year? Let these bracelets serve as a reminder of all the highly productive learning experiences you've juggled over the course of your high school career. And if in those moments you smile or even laugh out loud a bit at my expense, I don't mind. If you don't like your bracelet, well, please don't complain. Switch it with the friend sitting next to you. Problem solve. It's what you've been doing the last four years at MHS while taking care of this place, transforming it into an upcycled fashion show runway, a Hogwarts-inspired dining experience, or just a vibe that is pizza for the people. I wholeheartedly believe you are ready, seniors, for the next stage of learning and life. Thank you for asking me to speak. I trust that you can see my enthusiasm, passion, and gratitude for this work, these people, this place. I learned it from watching all of you this year. Think about it. There must be a higher love somewhere in the heart or hidden in the stars above. Without it, life is wasted time. Look inside your heart and I'll look inside mine. Things look so bad everywhere. In this whole world, what is fair? We walk the line and try to see. Falling behind on what could be. Whoa, bring me a higher love. Bring me a higher love. Bring me a higher love. With that higher love, I've been seeking out. Oh, 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 bring me higher love. 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 That higher love is here, Solons, and it's all of you. Thank you for an unforgettable year. Thank you, JK, and I think I speak for all the other seniors when I say that you and Lindy were key to making our senior year so special. So, thank you once again. And now we welcome Kiana Bromley and the MHS musicians to the stage to perform Sail on Solons by Jeff Sather. Let's give another round of applause for all these musicians. Holy crap! It's a rockin' concert here tonight. We know that you are ready to sail on out of here. We know that you will hear our cheers. As you march down these aisles, we look at you through our tears and our smiles and sing. Sail on Solons.
Sail on Solons.
Solons, sail on.
Sail on Solons.
Sail on Solons. The stage is set, the cast is assembled. The day you yearned for is now one to remember. This is the start, this is an ending. The curtain on these twelve years is descending. So, sail on Solons. Solons, sail on. Sail on Solons. The village helps to craft each vessel. Every blueprint, every beam. Tonight we honor and cherish you as you sail on to seize your dreams. Tonight you leave your safe harbor. It's time to test the ocean gale. It's time to see what you are made of. So hoist your anchor, hoist your sail.
Sail on Solons, Solons, sail on. Sail on Solons, Solons, sail on. Sail on Solons, Solons, sail on. Sail on Solons, Solons, sail on.
Thank you to all of our performers this evening. Please welcome Principal Jason Gingold to the stage.
A couple weeks ago, I asked JK and Alara to just give me a hint about their speeches. Really difficult to follow that now. And this is the part, seniors, where you get the metaphor. Thank you, Kiana Bromley, Sadie Jones, Ally Tarwater, and the MHS musicians for leading us in Sail on Solons. We'd like to acknowledge Superintendent Libby Bonesteel and Montpelier Roxbury School Board members and our first full graduating class from Roxbury. Before we begin our presentation of the diplomas to the class of 2024, I'd like to recognize our departing staff members. So, please acknowledge Val Belange for 36 years of service to Montpelier High School Val has given so much to this district, we thank her for her knowledge and her mentoring. Val has been present for at least seven principals? And if anyone is genuinely asking, Val has run MHS for the past three decades. I've learned so much from Val and am grateful for her mentorship and thank her and wish you the very best. We'd like to recognize Diana Hart. For her many years of service supporting our students in their learning, Diana has supported students at both Union Elementary and Montpelier High School. And we thank you for a commitment to students who benefit from having another caring adult to lean on. We wish you the best. Thank you, Diana. We'd like to recognize Kiana Bromley. Not only for her teaching, but for developing our theater arts program at MHS, thank you for creating a community within our school and for all your musicals and productions. Most of all, it is a place for students to find and develop their passion. We'd like to thank Sierra Norford. Also for your teaching, your work, your supporting of students, thank you for being a senior class advisor, the knitting club, and co-planning graduation. You will all be missed and remain Solons forever. Audience, seniors, please stand so we could recognize the entire MHS staff and teachers for their support, mentorship, and work. Please give them a round of applause. We acknowledge your expertise and dedication, your leadership in relationship building, your critical components of MHS philosophy. Take care of yourself, take care of others, and take care of this place. To the class of 2024, besides dad jokes, I like to collect leadership quotes, stories, and snippets, and I want to share one today that I saved just for you. Here's the metaphor. "We understand that life is a journey, which you graduating seniors are about to embark on your next adventure. We also know that sometimes life offers us a hurdle, a challenge, or an obstacle we need to overcome, whether it's a virus, a flood, a fire, or simply a flat tire. Life is about an ever-evolving journey marked by unforeseen challenges or celebrations." I'd like to share Buddha's parable of two arrows with you so you can consider it as you embark on your journey ahead. Buddha told a story about a hunter who was walking in the woods and was hit in the arm by an arrow and then made himself sick with worry about how to get home. Buddha explains that the first arrow is this unexpected challenge in your journey. These first arrows will come at your way in both big and small ways, and often those setbacks or first arrows are way beyond your control. The second arrow allows us to choose how we respond at the moment when that tiny bit of panic or anxiety or worry or adversity occurs. The first arrow represents the actual challenge or event that can cause us to feel uncomfortable, while the second arrow is that personal narrative you tell in your head. It's how you react. It's the story you tell yourself. You get to decide if you want to deflect, reverse the story, or change your own personal narrative of the second arrow. How can you help yourself when those first arrows come your way? Simply, you take care of others. First, try to recognize that adversity is only temporary. Maintaining your confidence in the face of uncertainty lives on after the moment. That challenging moments will fade over time. Look around you, Solons. You've made many connections through shared moments and experiences, built trust and solidarity, maintain the mindset of "we," the mindset of taking care of others. I want you to remember these connections feelings when the first arrow inevitably comes. You can deflect the first arrow through friendships and relationships by relying on one another. And how can you avoid the second arrow? You take care of yourself. You get to choose an empowered response and take time to recognize your personal growth and reflection. Solons, be empowered. While you cannot always control your circumstances, you can control how you react. For four years, you've developed the mindset of take care of yourself, take care of others, and take care of this place. And as you leave, we ask you to continue that practice. Practice mindfulness and build your resilience. Practice and develop the capacity to stay aligned with your own personal values and goals. Practice taking care of yourself, others, and your new place. Arrows are just hurdles, but they're also a catalyst for growth. Find a way to bounce back with greater strength, wisdom, and perspective. Surround yourself with great friends, inspire yourself to learn, innovate, be creative, and reflect. Today, and this is where I think I won up, JK, you will receive a temporary arrow tattoo - JK was the guinea pig for that, by the way - to remind you to draw on your own strengths when life aims arrows at you. You already know what to do. Take care of yourself, take care of others, take care of your new place. Solons, we congratulate you on your accomplishments, your curiosity, the reflection you will gain, and the gift of extended learning you will embark on. Congratulations, Class 2024.
Thank you to all of our incredible speakers and performers, and it is now time to present the graduates. Emmett C. Jarvis. Magdalena Jude-Cords. Andre K. Savard. Sophia Margaret Gendren-Sevi. Stephen Robert Supan. Amelia Jane Woodard. Jaya Morris Armstrong. Ella Jewel Everbeck. Zoe Jean Ayers. Sadie I. Bothwell. Sadie I. Bothwell. Cyrus Bowen. Reagan Marie Riojas-Breshir Bridgman. Beckett R. Buckley. Tazio Campagna. Esterline Carlson. Cadence Sequoia Centers. Maya Lamanya Chandler. Sadie H. Hinchin Childs. Zoe Emerson Colvin. Craig L. Kirschman III. Shane W. Curtin. Brooke Rosina Dubrowski. Ireland Donahue. Penelope Aurora Edgar. Emma R. Eggleston. Charles W. Ehrlich. John McClay Erickson. Abigail Garland. Mila Tyler Galsanon. Chayton Luke Grzinski. Hazel Ann Green. Sarah Dowd McCarthy-Green. Nathan Spencer Groff. Sage Specter Grossi. Freya Stiles Hubbard. Noel Obi Westbaum. Benjamin Stettler Kelly. Rowan Kurtlink. Alara Cone. Dia Kolkarni. Pasquale H. LaRosa. Owen D. Aloueta-Lathrop. Brio Levitt. Kayden Alexander Lilly. Clay McIver. Jamie A. Maddox White. Gavin J. McGill. Marcello Mares. Nathaniel Z. Monroe Ducharme. Kaylee Dunn Peterson. Josiah Phillips. Somerset Sarah Victoria Pierce. Zoe Emma Plummer-Trip. Mira Pompey. Cameron Raspe. Emery Olender Richardson. Stacy James Ritchie. Noah K. Rivera. Callum Robacheck. Peyton M. Roberts. Nicholas F. Robertson. Violet Rogers. Nicholas C. Rubin. Micah Sampson. Alyssa Nicole Seacor. Isabel Lynn Shroud. Keegan Smith. Wyatt Smith. Diego Inamacio Soria. Drew C. Salini. Nate Stefani. Willow Justice Sterling Crew. Iris H. Tuie. Finley Erwin Torrance Martin. Fletcher Turner. Margaret Lee Vojen. Benjamin James Wetherall. Demetrius S. Wickenheiser. Angelica Marie Zope. Annika Lee Turcot.
Katherine Elizabeth McCall. If everyone can please stand and let us acknowledge and congratulate the Class of 2024. Congratulations and best wishes, Solons.